Okay, we're gonna call this meeting to order. Planning Commission meeting of May 7th. And we'll start with our flag salute by Commissioner Gary Watts.
Please stand and join me in saying a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you, Gary. Never get tired of saying that. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hagel.
Here.
Solis.
Here.
Watson.
Here.
Watts.
Here.
And Chair Charlie Trail.
Here.
All are present.
Then we welcome everyone who's here tonight. Do we have any comments, public comments?
We have not received public comments.
Okay, on un-agendized items.
On non-agendized.
On the consent calendar, I do need to read that, correct, Matt? We're still reading that? Okay. All matters listed on our consent calendar are considered to be routine and all will be enacted by one vote. There will be no discussion of these items unless members of the commission request specific items be removed from the consent calendar for a separate action. A total of 30 minutes is provided for members of the public to address the commission on items that appear on the consent calendar. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. Public comments may be made in person at the meeting by submitting a speaker card to the commission secretary. Speaker cards will be called in the order received. Still images may just be displayed on the projector. All other audio and visual use is prohibited. Public comments may also be submitted by email for inclusion into the record. Email comments must be received prior to 6:00 PM and submitted to planningcommission@temeculaca.gov. All public participation is governed by council policy regarding public participation at meetings adopted by resolution number 2021-54. So our first item is to approve the action minutes of April 16th. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All right. We have a motion by Commissioner Hagel and a second by Commissioner Watson. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, and I wasn't at the meeting, so.
Okay.
Okay.
So the item passes 4-1.
What?
It passes, the motion passes 4-1.
Okay. I was giving Fernando a hard time. All right, item number two. So here we are to public hearing. Any person may submit written comments to the commission before a public hearing or may appear and be heard in support of or in opposition to the approval of the projects at the time of the hearing. If you challenge any of the projects in court, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at the public hearing or in written correspondence delivered to the commission secretary at or prior to the public hearing. For public hearings, each speaker is limited to five minutes. Public comments may be made in person at the meeting by submitting a speaker card to the commission secretary or by submitting an email to be included into the record. Email comments must be submitted to planningcommission@temeculaca.gov. Email comments on all matters, including those not on the agenda, must be received prior to the time the item is called for public comments. Any person dissatisfied with the decision of the commission may file an appeal of the commission's decision. Said appeal must be filed within 15 calendar days after service of written notice of the decision. The appeal must be filed on the appropriate Community Development Department form and be accompanied by the appropriate filing fee. All public participation is governed by the council policy regarding public participation at meetings adopted by resolution number 2021-54. All right, so we will have our item, planning application number PA 22-1123, a condominium map application to establish a subdivision of one lot into 14 condominium parcels, and PA 22-0941, a development plan application for the construction of 14 multifamily residential units on the vacant .68 acre parcel located at 42146 Sixth Street. Hymen, staff report, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So as you stated, the Amesa Village project consists of two applications, one being a map to create the 14 condo parcels and the second, a development plan application for the creation of 14 units on the 0.68 acre parcel. So here, we're looking at an aerial perspective of Old Town. The star you see on the far right is where we are, City Hall. Then on your screen, you'll see the creek in the middle of the page traversing Old Town. On the far left is the project site. So the project site is located at 42146 Sixth Street. This is located on the elbow of Sixth Street, where as you continue curves headed north turns into Felix Valdez. So the project, again highlighted here with a red star now, is located in the Old Town Temecula specific plan, more specifically within the Neighborhood Residential District, also known as the NR District. So this district is intended for attached and detached three-story residential development at a density of 20 to 35 units per the acre. As proposed, the project does meet the development standards and goals codified for the NR District. We'll get more into that in the next slides. But before we proceed, I wanted to talk a little bit about the condo map. And so I wanted to go a little bit into what it is and what it is not. So what the condo map is, it does not change any of the property lines. There are no changes to the 0.68 acre site, so it will remain at 0.68 acres. It does, however, establish unit boundaries for each independent apartment. And as, from what I understand, the applicant is creating 14 market rate apartment units. So by looking at the site plan here, you'll see that there is a ride-in and a ride-out from Sixth Street, which then leads out back onto Felix Valdez. On the site here, we have 34 parking spaces. Red cars there indicate we have 30 garage spaces. And then the red square here highlights the four surface parking spaces that the site has, or proposes. Then we have, on the site plan, four main buildings identified. These two buildings are at four-unit clusters. And then these two buildings highlighted in red are proposed at three-unit clusters. Red arrow at the top there identifies the, on the north portion of the site, the pedestrian access from the street and how the pedestrian accesses the site and a future gate to trail Red rectangle here identifies the amenities and where they're concentrated on this northern portion of the lot. More on that later. And then I wanted to showcase this here, which is the Creek Trail Access. So now jumping on to the amenities, we have 3,300 square feet of common amenity area. That's this whole rectangle here highlighted in red. Within it, we have a 20-by-20 shade structure, a unisex restroom. And then the red rectangle here shows the proposed restroom and patio. And as you can see from the rendering there, it incorporates the same colors, materials, finishes to match the residence buildings. We also have a 14-by-30 pool, eight-foot-by-eight-foot spa, fire pit there, two barbecue grills. And then again there, the Creek Trail Access. And per condition of approval number 16, it is to be gated and secured by a FOB or some other security measure. We're also highlighting the private open space that is shown in the form of porches and patios. Now moving on to the building floor plans. So we have a total of three unique floor plans. These plans range from 1,300 square feet up to 1,600 square feet. All the plans will feature three stories, stooped entryways and porches, over 100 square feet of private open space, again in the form of a deck or a patio, at least two-car garage spaces. And then out of all the units, 10 of them will be two-bedroom. That's going to be found on floor plan one and floor plan two. And then we have four units with three bedrooms. That's going to be floor plan three. And then the cluster of buildings are going to be organized on the site plan as follows. So top left highlighted there, Building A, that has units one through four. These units face Sixth Street and then partly faces the Rancho Creek Apartments. Building B has units five through seven that fronts Murrieta Creek. Same thing with Building D there, units eight through 11, also fronting Murrieta Creek. And then lastly, Building C, this is going to be units 12 through 14. This is adjacent to the Riverbank Village Apartments parking lot. Moving on to floor plans. So we're looking here at floor plan one. The left image showcases the first floor, and as you move to the right, you get to the third story or the third floor. So floor plan one is going to be found in unit one and two. It is the smallest of the three plans at 1,300 square feet of living space. Here highlighted is 133 square feet of private open space, again in the form of a porch or a deck, 459 square foot garage highlighted there. And then the first floor, coming out of the garage, has this landing, which some might use as a storage room or a mudroom. And then as you move to the second floor, we have 588 square feet of living space. This is where you'll find the dining, the dining room, the living room, kitchen, and restroom. Going up to the third floor, 637 square feet of living space, two-bed, two-bath, and laundry. Now we have floor plan two, second largest of the three floor plans. This is going to be found in unit three, four, five, six, seven, 12, 13, and 14. So this is 1,579 square feet of living space, 133 square feet of private open space, 476 square foot garage highlighted there. Here, 143 square feet of living space, again, some would call it storage room, some mudroom. And then leading up to the second floor at 672 square feet, this is where you'll find dining, living, kitchen, and restroom. Moving up to the third floor, 764 square feet of living space, two-bed, two-bath, and again laundry room. Now the largest of the three, this is going to be found in unit eight, nine, 10, and 11, largest of the plans at 1,600 square feet approximately. And we have 179 square feet of private open space there, 640 square foot garage, and then some of them have the option at 700 square feet, a three-car garage. That three-car garage is going to be found in unit 10 and unit 11. First floor, 120 square feet of living, storage, mudroom, as I mentioned earlier. Second floor, 674 square feet of living space, dining, kitchen, restroom is found there. And then third floor, 810 square feet of living space with a three-bed, two-bath, and a laundry room. So here, we have a slide I wanted to put in there where we're showcasing the pre-app, where we were in the talking stages, if you will, of the application versus where we are now. So we went through two rounds of pre-applications. Before we received the formal submittal, we continued to work with the applicant until we got to where we are today, which is showcased on the two images on the right. So the right half is a sneak peek into what I'm going to be presenting before you tonight on the later slides, but the main changes I want to showcase here between the two elevations have to do with the elimination of this repeated copy-paste design, the repetitiveness that you see on the elevations there, where we now added shutters, recessed windows, there's tower elements added, exposed rafter beams, decorative wrought iron work, window sills, and of course, a more authentically Spanish design as specified in our specific plan there. So, which now leads me to the next slide. Architecture. The Old Town specific plan allows a developer to choose from a multitude of styles, including craftsman, mercantile, neoclassical, and of course, the Spanish Andalusian, which is what the applicant has selected. So we'll start with Building A. This, at the top, what you see here is, sorry, building facing Sixth Street, followed by Buildings B and D, which front Murrieta Creek Trail, and then Building C, which was, as was shown on the previous slide, fronts the parking lot of the Riverbank Village Apartments. And then here are some typical side and rear elevations where the, that is typically seen wherever we have a garage. So again, this is the Spanish Andalusian architectural style. All of these elevations are going to include the solid mass with stucco finishes. You'll see recessed windows and doors throughout, rectangular openings that are set on wood or stucco columns. It must incorporate a white or soft pastel or tone colors. This style also has ceramic tile accents, of course, Spanish S tile roof, and twisted wrought iron details throughout. Sorry. So on this slide, I've highlighted the specific design elements that further enhance or characterize this Andalusian design. So starting with the exterior plaster, it's going to be a fine sand stucco smooth finish, floral white color, as you can see there. Wood accents, you'll see this throughout the facades. Wood accents are going to be incorporated on shutters, exposed rafters, window trims and columns. Stone veneer. We'll have Spanish tiles, Spanish S tiles, recessed windows, decorative iron railing with the twisted pickets, Spanish lanterns, terracotta tile inset with the black iron work details, and then terracotta tile on the porch and planters, cluster barrel accents, and a decorative eve cornice on the sides of the building facade. So I wanted to show you some renderings now. This is Building D with the creekside view. Here's an amenities view with Building B and D. Interior driveway view exemplified off of Building D. Sixth Street view, Building A. And creekside view, Building D. So on this landscape plan, you'll see a variety of approximately 20 different plants. There was a design theory that went into this design, which was essentially to design the landscaping so that we can soften the hardscape, we can screen mechanical equipment, enhance blank walls, so this is what you see on driveways, sides of the building, et cetera. We wanted to buffer the perimeter and walkways and entryways with landscaping. And some of the typical plantings that you'll see prominently throughout here that I'm highlighting include the species of strawberry tree, Italian alder, glossy privet. For shrubs, we incorporate lily turf, desert marigold, roses, and for vines, honeysuckle. Landscape accounts for 17% of the landscaping. And then from an environmental standpoint, the project is in accordance with the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA. This project is also categorically exempt from further environmental review per Section 15332 in field development projects. So before I give you a recommendation, I did want to note that the planning department did receive a call on May 5th, followed by an email by the same resident of the Riverbank Apartments, which again is south of this project location on Pujo Street. The resident expressed her opposition against the project via email, May 6th, and that email has been placed on the dais before you. So with that said, and considering that the site is zoned residential and that the project adheres to the Old Town specific plan, staff recommends the planning commission approve PA 22-1123 condo map and PA 22-0941, the development plan, subject to the conditions of approval. That concludes my presentation. Staff's here to answer any questions, as is the applicant and the architect.
Thank you, Hymen. Appreciate that. We'll go ahead and ask questions of staff. I'm going to start down here with Fernando.
I just have two questions. One question is, where are all the mechanical, like the AC units, going to be placed? And my other question is, I saw on the landscape plan that there's like hatches. Are those going to be pavers like along the entryway?
Yes. So I'm pulling up the landscaping plan here. In front of the buildings, you'll see a cluster of landscaping. So you could look at like Building B, for example, Building D, in between the two units, right up against, I will highlight that. So right up against the building, there's two units, two mechanical units there, two mechanical units there, there, and it's all screened by landscaping here. And then your second question, I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
Was about the pavers? I show that you're kind of showing like the, are those pavers or are those like stamped concrete?
That's going to be pavers.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Bob?
Okay. Very good presentation. You answered most of my questions in the presentation, so I'm down to just a couple. One is, there is a gate in the back that goes to the Murrieta Creek. If you were to go through that gate, is there clear access to get to the Murrieta Creek Trail? Or would there, is there's any work that would need to be done to get to the trail?
Good question. There is no direct access at this point. One of the amenities that we requested was direct Creek Trail access. So that is a condition of approval that has been placed on the project. And per that condition of approval, the applicant will continue to work with the agencies that are involved in that. It's going to be flood control and Army Corps of Engineers.
So it's planned, you know, for the future then?
It's a, yes, sir.
Second question, the Pachanga Tribal Land property, what is on that?
They would rather, well, they'd rather not disclose that. I don't know if, Matt, you want to weigh in on that? If I can say anything beyond that?
What's the question?
So there is a, there is a spot that is reserved for the Pachanga, for the Pachanga Tribe, and I was wondering, is that, was that a burial site or what, you know, what's, why would they get a claim to that land?
I could actually take a stab at it. So it's typical for Pachanga to look at sites that are close to the creek as areas of significance. And so one of the things that they did in part of the review of this project is, other than conditioning the project to say that, hey, if they do find artifacts, part of it is that certain things are designated for, certain areas could be designated for that.
Okay. Does that, that piece of land need to be protected in some way? Fenced or?
They, the way that you look, you see it on the landscaping plan was approved by them.
Okay.
And they reviewed it. They had a lot of suggestions as to what even plant species can go there.
Okay, so they're good with it then?
Yes, sir.
The last question is, will there be an HOA?
I'll defer that question to the applicant.
Okay. I'm done.
Gary?
I have no questions.
Mark?
Only briefly, thank you. Hymen, could we revisit the slide that showed the service parking? It's hard for me to read them with the hashes on them. What's, what are the designations on those? Can you tell me?
Did you say on the hashes?
Yeah, the, what looks like four parking spaces next to the ADA spot. What are those?
This is parking right here, and it's going to be paver material.
It's paver, okay. It's open parking for guests.
Correct.
It is, okay. And that's the extent of parking on site? That plus an ADA, or is that an ADA spot or is that an ADA landing zone that's adjacent to?
So where I have my highlighter, that's the ADA designated parking spot. Next to that is the landing zone.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you very much.
All right. Any other questions of staff? I just had one. Did you have material boards?
I do.
Okay. Always want to see those. And I appreciated your pre-app pictures to now. Definitely an improvement on that, so thank you on that. That was my only thing, I just wanted to see those. So we will go ahead and, if there are no more questions of staff, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Thank you. And bring the applicant up.
Meanwhile, if anybody in the public would like to speak, I have some request-to-speak forms here. Okay.
Please introduce yourselves and...
Good evening. My name is Youssef Audi. I'm the developer for the project.
My name is Ryan Oldham, Oldham Architects. I'm the architect of the project.
Okay. Do you want to say anything else besides what our staff report was? If you want to, if there's anything you would like to say about the project, now's your chance.
I don't think...
No? Okay.
Yeah, I'll just say that, I mean, it was, it's a uniquely shaped site. It was a, it was a fun design project, but it was challenging. And Hymen did a really good job of directing us the design of the project, and we appreciate that, and so we're excited to build it.
Okay. All right. Do we have questions of the applicant? I'm going to start on this end. No? Gary? No? Bob?
Is there a plan for an HOA?
Yes, we, originally, I believe during the process, we submitted, I believe, an application for the HOA.
Okay. My, my reason for asking is that there's four open parking spaces. There's, every garage can take two cars and a couple, get three. Not everybody ends up wanting to park in their garage. Those four spaces could go quickly, and you could end up having issues between neighbors. So an HOA, you know, is the place to solve those problems, and that's, that's the reason why I'm asking. So I'm glad that you're, that you're doing that.
Fernando? No? Okay. No other questions of the applicant? Yeah, pass those down. Okay, and do we have any public comments?
We have two.
Okay.
David Gonzalez. Please approach the podium.
Good evening. I've never done this before.
That's okay. Go ahead and state your name again.
My name is David Gonzalez. My question is, traffic control there? It's already pretty bad how it is now, especially with the other buildings being built. Everybody's parking in that area. Not only that, but at the moment that I've lived there, there's been like multiple crashes because of that turn. So how is traffic going to be controlled in that general area because of the, obviously Old Town gets traffic jam here, so everybody goes around. So not only is it the people that live there down the street, up the street... So not only is it the people that live there, down the street, up the street, but other people that come from other places that go around to avoid this traffic. And that's like the daytime, but the nighttime, there's people that are like basically speed racing through those turns because it's so wide, they assume they can just take the whole turn. So are they gonna control that or how are they gonna manage that for like the safety of the people or even themselves that had decided to buy or build or if they can't get in and out because of these things either? So that's what I'm...
Thank you. Thank you.
Our second speaker is Nancy Gonzalez.
Good evening. My name is Nancy Gonzalez. So my question is also as well for traffic control. I do live literally right next to where you guys are planning on building, to cross the street just to get to the mailbox. It's a struggle, there's too much traffic. There's, besides our house, there's like four to five houses as well. Our drive-through is like right there. And then when the bus stops as well, there's not enough space for this bus stop for the children to get out. So I wanna know how you guys are gonna actually make it work in order for everybody to be able to get out safely as well as us that live there. Besides that, since we do ne- live next door to where you guys are planning on building, I wanna make sure that there's actual like, like privacy based off the building of like where you guys are gonna place the windows, place settings, because I low-key wouldn't want somebody looking down into our yard or into inside our house if we live right next door. So those are my main questions.
Thank you. Any other speakers?
There are none.
Okay, we'd like to call the applicant back up. So maybe you can answer any of those questions for us?
I wanna comment on the, definitely as far as like the construction process. And we're gonna be providing a traffic control to control our construction activities at that time. And that would be probably with the coordination with the city. As far as, I think, the privacy issue, my understanding that our side of view where we have some pretty small windows, I think, like maybe, or maybe we don't, just on that side where I think the neighbor...
Next to the Riverbank Apartments, is that what you're talking about? The ones that face the Riverbank?
She's talking about, I believe, on the south side of, is it the south, Ryan? I mean, where they, they have some, I think here in this area here.
That'd be the west, the west side.
The west side, I believe they have some, we have a few like single-family residences there, I think, on that, next to us. But I don't think we have on our side elevation anything related to privacy, I'm assuming.
Yeah, we, I, I guess the, the one unit that kinda fronts another building would be unit number four. That's in, in Building A. And that kind of, that's kind of the unit off of Sixth Street there that, that kinda clips the, or it's with, kind of out in front of the side of the, the home there or the building that's to the north. Other than that, we don't really front any other residences. We, we, I mean, we do have sides of the building, but the, the windows are pretty, you know, they're pretty small. They don't really, I don't think there's really, there's not a, a small proxy. I think there's a decent area there between our building and the next building over. So it's really only unit number four that kinda fronts another building, so to speak. But it fronts the side of that building. So I don't know, and there, there's probably a good fifteen-plus feet there, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Any other questions for the applicant at this time? Thank you. Before we close the public hearing, is there any response from you all for the questions? Do we need any other clarification at all on that?
Well, regarding the traffic control, as the applicant mentioned, they still need to go through their construction document phase. So we'll be reviewing that at the time to see what improvements may or may not be able to be made. Since it is zoned already residential, you know, there's not much that can be done as far as enhanced improvements to the arterials or to the Felix Valdez. But we actively have a project at Felix Valdez, and we'll look at that during the construction document phase.
Can we look at that corner, like what she was talking about? Because I know I've, I've gone around that corner too. So that was, I think that would be important to look at that and see if, see if there's anything that we can do to make that safer.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, I, I don't think there's any striping in that corner, I don't believe. It might be able to be striped to make sure those cars don't take a wide turn.
All things we'll look at during the construction document phase.
Okay.
It is, it is striped. It's a double stripe. And that stripe continues Sixth Street, westward. You make a left on Pujoal. All of those apartments there, it's a double yellow as well.
It's just striped in the middle though, right?
Correct.
Yes, but there might be able to be striping on the sides that help cars, you know, it steers the cars away from that, taking that big wide turn, so.
Okay. All right. Okay, if we have no more comments, I'm gonna go ahead and close the public hearing. All right. We have any other comments? Or this time, I guess if we have anything we wanna ask of staff, you can. If you have anything lastly that you wanna ask? If not, any discussion before we make a motion? I'll start with Mr. Watson. Okay, Gary? Bob? Fernando?
None.
Okay. All right, so do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
And a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Fernando and a second by Gary. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, congratulations. All right. We will go to, oh gosh, I lost my, let me see yours. Somehow I lost it. Go to item number three, planning application number PA 24-0363, a development plan for the Alter Private Recreation Center and Village C1 Park. The recreation center contains an approximately 1,991 square foot recreation building, approximately 1,437 square foot multipurpose building, approximately 1,017 square foot pool building, pool, spa, cabanas, fire pit area and barbecue area. The park contains two pickleball courts, half basketball court, picnic areas, and an open turf area. 940-320-001 and 013 Scott.
So during the public noticing for this project, the noticing was not done properly to the parties of the settlement agreement between Alter and outside agencies. So therefore, we have to continue this item to the May 21st Planning Commission, at which time the presentation will be given.
Okay. So do we need to go ahead and vote on that continuance?
Yeah, you'll wanna do a, a motion in a second to continue it to the next Planning Commission, which is on May 21st. For the benefit of the audience members, if you were here to speak on this item regarding Alter, you can come back to that meeting on the 21st, or you can get in contact with city staff. We work very closely with Brookfield, and we can try to address your comments if you're not able to make it to the next meeting on the 21st.
Okay. I will go ahead and ask for a motion for continuance? Oh, okay, go ahead.
I need to recuse myself. I own preferred stock in a sister company having nothing to do with residential real estate. But I will not be voting on this. And next meeting, I will be, I will be taking myself off the dais.
Okay. Thank you, Bob. All right, now we'll ask for a motion for a continuance.
Sorry. Go ahead. Move to approve the continuance of the item.
Okay.
Second.
All right. So we have a motion by Mark Watson and a second by Gary Watts. That's hard to say, Watson and Watts. Sounds like a law firm. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right.
Motion passes for?
Motion carries. All right, four zero. All right, awesome.
Question? You, are you gonna be here at the next scheduled meeting?
I will not be here at the next scheduled meeting.
Okay. And Bob will be recusing himself from that item, so we gotta make sure we're gonna have a quorum. So...
I'll be here.
Okay, we will. All right, very good.
Unless my wife gives birth.
Oh.
So that's the week.
Oh, that's the week? Uh-oh.
Oh, boy.
Sorry.
That's a, I didn't think about that, but yeah. That's the week my wife will give birth.
Yeah, I will be out of town.
Well, fingers are crossed.
Yeah, okay. I'm up the street, so.
All right. So we voted on the continuance. We're good on that. We're clear on the next meeting. And now commissioner reports. I will start on this end. Fernando, you're having a baby soon. This is exciting.
Yes, very excited.
And you're having a?
Boy.
Boy.
I have a boy.
So proud.
Mini me.
What?
A mini me.
A mini you?
Yeah.
Well, you know, you could come out looking like your wife.
I don't know. But, uh, yeah. And I went to the, the Broadrun Cruise on Friday. It was a big event. Had a, had a lot of time. Good time, and everyone's talking about it, so it was great.
Good. Awesome. Bob?
Nothing.
Nothing? Okay. Gary?
Nothing. Nothing.
And Mr. Watson?
Briefly, I attended a subcommittee meeting tonight, only briefly. And...
The one you weren't invited to?
The one I wasn't invited to, and I was promptly shown the door. Briefly, I was there, yeah. The...
The ones that you're supposed to be there, do you go to?
No, I don't attend those. Under no circumstances do I attend those. But any other, I'll show up. I did, I did take Matt Peters up on his invitation to attend the most recent city council meeting where a fairly robust discussion was held. I, I had an early wake-up, so I left a little after 9:00 PM. But I know you were there for the duration.
I was.
And that's, that's pretty much all I had. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks for being there. Okay. All right. And I will not be at the next meeting because I, we have a graduation in the family up in Utah, high school graduation. My first little, and I am not that old. I think I, yeah, I'm not at all, but it's happening. It's kinda crazy. Exciting. All right, commission, subcommittee reports. Anybody down here? Gary, would you report on our subcommittee, please?
We did have a subcommittee meeting. The subcommittee is general...
General Plan update.
Subcommittee, you're right. And due to recent legislation, we need to respond to requirements contained within that legislation as it pertains to our municipal code and our future general plan revision as we move into that area. So we will keep you posted as we bring our codes into compliance with legislation that's been passed regarding housing. Is that good?
That'll work. That will work, thank you.
All right, any other subcommittee meetings? Mark? Okay. All right, and Matt, you're up.
So just wanted to make you aware, next week, May is Bike Month. And next week, Wednesday at 2:00, there's a ribbon cutting. As you know, we've been working on the trails. And along Santa Gertrudas Creek, there is the Margarita Undercrossing. So there'll be a ribbon cutting at 2:00. All are invited. And that's the opening of the Margarita Undercrossing.
Where is that exactly?
Let's see here. Margarita, and do you know where the Winco grocery store is? That's the undercrossing. Yeah. Ron, do you have any more details about that location?
Yeah, so the ribbon cutting will happen on the opposite side of Winco. So turn in that parking lot, and there's an area there where the ribbon cutting will be. But it's right there.
The opposite side, like the trail?
Yeah, when you, when you go and you're going north on Margarita, there is the traffic signal there to get into Winco.
Yeah.
Go to the right, and it'll be, the setup will be over there.
Go to the right, so it's in the shopping area to the right?
Yeah, to the back of Long's. And then there's a, be an area there. That's tentative right now, but I'll make sure that we get you the information.
Yeah, let me know.
Of exact location.
I would like to plan on being there.
Yeah.
Yeah, and...
It is Wednesday at 2:00 PM.
The 14th.
Yes.
14th, correct?
14th at 2:00 PM.
Yeah, and just for a little more context, that means if you live in Somers Bend or you're in Old Town, you'd be able to follow the Myrieta Creek up to Santa Gertrudas Creek or vice versa. And it's all Class 1 trail with minimal interaction with the street.
Is this the final connection? Is this the last connection, or is there still?
Basically, along Myrieta Creek and the north side, along Santa Gertrudas Creek, this will create a seamless trail.
But not all the way through Temecula yet?
Not all the way through Temecula, just yet.
But at least the north side of Temecula.
Yeah. North and west side. So Old Town north, and then the whole north side.
Okay.
To Somers Bend.
Yeah, that is a really big deal. Awesome, thank you. Okay. Public Works, you are on, was that it, Matt?
That was it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Well, we opened the freeway on the 28th, and I think it's been a great success. We've gotten nothing but positive reviews and results, just all around. Everybody's talking about their reduced commute time. So that project will continue its punch list items. There's cleanup still to do over the next couple of months, but it's functioning the way it was meant to function. So that was a big, you know, milestone for us. But in conjunction with that freeway project, the Smart Freeway project done by RCTC is being constructed at the moment. And that will create a full closure of Temecula Parkway's northbound entrance onto the 15th. And that will be happening from May 11th through the 19th. So...
Happy Mother's Day. Awesome.
So...
Just saying, it's awesome.
So hopefully, hopefully we'll miss that Sunday, you know, and it'll be back in online. But that is RCTC's project. And then also, there's the Ox Lane projects that are going on that Caltrans is doing. So over the next couple of months, there's gonna be a lot of chaos between the two projects because there's going to need some closures. But I'll get those dates to you as time goes on. But I wanted to make sure you understood, 11th through the 19th, northbound on at Temecula Parkway.
Just wanna make sure that word gets out there really well to the public, because that's a huge deal for the south end.
Yeah.
Of us that live in the south.
End.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right.
Will there be signs posted?
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, there'll be CMS boards, and there'll be signage all the way through.
Okay.
Anything else, Ron? Is that it? That is a lot.
Yeah, that's a lot for what Temecula's gonna have to endure regarding these projects.
Right.
I have a comment, but you don't need to answer or respond to it, Ron. But it's just from an outsider's standpoint, do these agencies like RCTC, Caltrans ever talk to each other and decide to do a project as a whole instead of what they do now? You don't need to answer, I know the answer already.
Thank you.
It would be nice from an outsider's standpoint to see more cooperation. When they tear up a freeway, if they would do all the repairs at once instead of doing it four or five different times. Anyhow, editorial comment?
Well, I think what's great is that freeway is open, and it, and it only took two years, which some people are like, oh my gosh, but then you're like, really? If the federal government had done it, right?
Yeah, we, we did it in two years, which was amazing. And the ribbon cutting for that will be June 16th. And so we'll meet again before then, so I can give you guys a heads up.
Okay. All right.
June 16th.
Thanks so much for what you're doing, Ron. Appreciate it.
Thank you.